And I forgot to press my button. Would anybody like me to repeat that? Okay, thank you. What a good start. We have no questions or petitions from members of the public. Please can I request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so we don't disturb the meeting? I understand there is no fire test planned today. If there is an emergency evacuation, as usual, please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly areas out in Tudor Square. We do have one item, number 10 today, it's not available to the public and press because it contains exempt information described in paragraph three of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act. If members wish to discuss that, we will need to ask any members of the public and press to leave. We'll be switching the recording equipment off at that point. However, minutes will be taken in the usual manner. Can I ask people to introduce themselves? Start on this side. councillor Ola.
Good morning Chair. My name is councillor Ebi Ola, Natha Redden Sharo, I'm also the deputy chair of this committee.
Councillor Mary Lee, Darnall Ward, and I'm substituting for councillor Nicky Bellfield.
Morning councillor Denise Fox, local councillor for Burley.
Henry Notte, councillor for Hillsborough Ward and Green Party spokesperson for the EDS committee.
Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesmore.
Simon Clum Jones, councillor for Beechfield Green.
Thank you. We've also understand that we have one councillor, councillor Said, who's... Two councillors running slightly late. Could you just confirm who they are?
They are councillor Safia Said and councillor Tony Downing.
Thank you very much. So moving on, other than that, we have apologies from councillor Nicky Bellfield. I just need to confirm that the meeting today is open to the public, but item 10, as I previously explained, is not available to the press because it contains exempt information. So moving on, do any members want to declare an interest to any of the items on the agenda today? Okay, thank you very much. Minutes of the previous meeting, which are in the agenda pack, guys. Does anybody want to raise any issues or amendments? Can we take those as a true record? Thank you very much, we'll take that. We have received no questions or petitions for today's committee from the public and there are no members' questions. So we'll move straight on to item seven in your pack, which is the work programme. And I think Fiona, you're going to just give us a quick run through of that.
Thank you. So the work programme item, as always, we invite feedback from yourselves, any changes that you think should be made or anything that you think should be added. We've got in appendix one, all of the new items that have been added since the previous municipal year, including items on today's agenda and a significant number of items for September's agenda. I would like to mention that I think beyond September, the work programmes to date is looking less populated, so as ever invite any items that you think might need to be discussed in committees beyond September.
Thank you Fiona. Colleagues, councillor Masters.
Can I just ask, I mean, I know that we've frequently raised about the LGBT quarter as an item here, and I know it's set for informal workshops so that it can report back in September, but has any work been done in the interim since our last meeting?
From my point, the honest answer is I don't know.
Yes, there has been work going on. So our director of investment in climate change and planning and transport has been leading some work and doing some one-to-ones with the sector and with officers, and he's looking to bring that workshop together. So it will be programmed in for September, as kind of confirmed in the work programme, but work is underway.
So there was just one thing from me. Can I just double check Fiona? Do we have anything in the work programme for an update on the investment zone and progress on that?
There's currently no formal decision required on the investment zone, so it isn't on the work plan. We can however do an update for committee on the investment zone progress.
I was thinking, just I'll take comments colleagues, but because it's such an important thing for the city, perhaps later in the municipal year, we could have an update on how it's going, how much interest has been shown, how many applications have been made, things like that. Would that be good? I'm seeing nods around the room, so perhaps if we could do that. Unless there's anything else, obviously we can add items to the work programme outside of this meeting, but we'll move on. Thank you. So we'll move on to item eight, which is the Sheffield Pride of Place Programme. That's page 29 of your deck. And Yvonne, I think you'll be taking us through that.
That's correct, yes, thank you. So we're asking committee members this morning to approve for the executive director of City Futures to enter into a grant funding agreement with Business in the Community for three years' funding for £150,000 for the place programme. Longer standing committee members will remember Business Sheffield secured shared prosperity funding for the first year and that future years would be still required to look for. So it's just important to note that whilst funding is not secured for years two and three funding, if Business Sheffield is unable to secure funding from other external funding sources, then we will look for corporate savings to cover years two and three funding. The place programme is run by Business in the Community. It's a national programme. It builds on already the existing delivery model of Business in the Community in Sheffield, and it requires the local authority to contribute £50,000 per year for involvement in the programme. That £50,000 per year is then matched by private sector members on the place programme board. The board is run by chaired by Henry Boot, and that brings together leaders from the private, the public and the volcom sector in Sheffield. Kate Josephs, the chief executive, is the Sheffield City Council board member on the place programme board. It delivers campaigns and projects in Sheffield communities to really change the dial in more disadvantaged communities in Sheffield. The place programme in Sheffield has three priorities: economy, infrastructure and social mobility. So just to bring that to life, there has been a campaign in that social mobility priority area already, expanding on the See It Be It Programme in Sheffield and helping 25 schools in the more disadvantaged areas in Sheffield to have business relationships. So a launch of that programme a few months ago actually saw 200 businesses go to that launch event, a significant event that will make a real difference in those 25 schools. Since that launch, there have been three events in three of those schools, in Meadowhead, Oasis, Don Valley and Sheffield Springs, where businesses have been introduced to those schools and they will go on to deliver activity in those schools. So that's the first campaign of the place programme. So I suppose that's just an example of how the place programme serves to support and amplify a really important and impactful service. So going forward, we're actively working with the programme to explore how Sheffield can utilise the board on these priority areas, and we'll be meeting with them and helping them to support working groups, which will feed into the next board meeting, which is in October. Thank you.
Thank you Yvonne. And just on a personal note before I open it up, I actually went to one of the big events in Hillsborough last year, back in the day you call it a careers fair. It was absolutely round, lots of employers, lots of kids looking to their futures. It was really good. So colleagues, do we have any questions? I'll go Henry first, then Barbara, and then Simon.
Thank you for that Yvonne. So there's no other sources of funding identified that might mean that the council's not having to put in the contribution for the next three years. What do you think the chances are of funding coming forward that would negate the council's obligation?
So the first year, as I said, we secured shared prosperity funding. I think until we know what the future situation is with regeneration monies for business support, it's unclear. So our current shared prosperity funding runs out at the end of March, but you know, we do expect that there will be some information about future funding. We've discussed this with finance and legal colleagues, and actually, if we're unable to find that funding for years two and three, then we'll look to the Corporate Centre for Savings for years two and three. Business in the Community require commitment to a three-year funding application, which is, you know, the reason that we're, the grant funding application has to be for that three-year period.
So we should assume that we're going to be having to pay for years two and three and then sort of cross our fingers?
I don't think we 100% know yet. Obviously with the new government, a lot of the new potential funding streams for this kind of activity around business support aren't out yet, or it's not available, all of the information. So we are excellent at bringing in external funding and utilising all of the different ways to do that. So I don't think it's an assumption at this point, we're very much going to try and bring in external funding to cover the cost of it, but obviously to commit to a three-year contract, we need to make sure we've got a plan B.
Barbara.
Thank you for that. I mean, it wasn't my question, but I'll lead on from that. I mean, have the businesses involved shown any interest in supporting it for the further years two and three?
Yes, that's part of the commitment to being involved in the board, I understand. So yeah, yes, yes, they have, yes.
So it's a potential source of funding support for the final years?
Yes, the private sector match funding matches the local authority requirement of £50,000. The local authority is, as part of their commitment required to fund that £50,000 is their kind of commitment to the programme, if you like.
No, I understand, but that wasn't clear. It's got to be from the local authority.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, I was interested in your comments on page 32 about primary. I mean, I understand what can be done in the secondary sector, but I'm just curious, what happens in the primary school with these businesses? Page 32. You had a primary plot in 80 primary schools supporting over 4,000 children. And I'm just, as I say, it's pure curiosity, what was going on?
In primaries, I don't know all of the detail of what happens in primary schools, but I do know that See It Be It works across both primary and secondary schools.
So the programme pulls across all different council departments, so we're holding the contract and the overall element, but the See It Be It programme is managed by colleagues elsewhere, so they fed into the report, but Yvonne perhaps doesn't know the detail now, so we'll come back to you on that if that's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Just before I bring in Simon, just for colleagues that are new to committee on this, I try to share the questions and comments out evenly, but it's not mandatory, so I'll do my best to share them out. Simon.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Notte and councillor Masters actually went to the same areas. I've got two questions really, I suppose. Mine's a bit of a, I've not sat on this board or even a, one of these types of boards before. So just corporate saving, or you know, getting away from corporate savings, one of those expressions, does that mean from within EDS or within the wider council?
It specifies corporate because we don't want to be having to find it within EDS. Our budgets are extremely tight, as committee members will know, and we leverage them 10 times over. So £100,000 actually within our budget is quite a large percentage, and this is a corporate agreement and proposal, so that's why the agreement is that we'll try and find it externally, but if not, we'll look to the Corporate Centre to support on that. Thank you.
Okay, so it is more or less guaranteed that it will go on. Thank you. So yeah, my other question was around the primary side of things. Also, it's targeting 80 primary schools, about half of the primary schools in Sheffield. I'm just wondering, are we going to be targeting those two where it will have the most impact, where there is the most need, or will it be a kind of first come, first served basis?
So See It Be It programme happens already across schools in Sheffield. The Pride of Place programme has helped to amplify that significantly by working in 25 most disadvantaged schools in the most disadvantaged communities. And in doing that, it will expand into primary and secondary schools in those areas, and in those schools in particular that struggle to engage with private sector businesses in their areas. Yes, it will, yes.
So I'll go Denise, your next question, and then after that Mary.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for the report. I've been to a job fair and it is well attended, and that's fantastic. But my concern is that we don't want to raise expectations and what the businesses are telling me, that they would like to take on more apprentices, but they can't afford it. So is there any plans to lobby the government to help with this? Because that would be, that would help, that's what businesses are telling me. That would help them tremendously if they could help support the apprentices. Have we got any plans for that?
Thank you for that. Yeah, it is a difficult time for businesses and it does cost money to invest in your staff. However, we do have a number of programmes and there is money for apprenticeships and training, both through our Opportunity Sheffield programme, which the councils run, and also through some of the skills programmes that are at Simca level as well, so the Merrill Combined Authority. So we'd encourage any business who wants to get involved either in See It Be It or in any of our job fairs or apprenticeships to come and speak to us, because we can advise them and support them in accessing funding where it's available and work with them to make sure they've got the training they need for their employees. But absolutely note the point and would encourage you to ask people to come and speak to Opportunity Sheffield directly so we can help them.
That's very reassuring, thank you.
Councillor Lee.
Yeah. My question is again, it's about schools and the work that you do and also businesses do, and do they have a good relationship with the teaching staff and the academies? Because there's lots of programmes offered to schools and their curriculum sometimes makes it very difficult to fit things in. And so somebody comes along with a really brilliant thing to do, but because everything's so packed, it's difficult to say, yeah, we'll slot it in. And we know that locally when we want to work with schools on various issues. So I'm just wondering about the relationship, do schools and the academies in particular, because they're a bit hard to reach at times, they understand what business might need now and in the future and help to guide young people, apart from giving them a bit of work experience, but guide young people to think very, I know they probably do this at secondary school, but I think you can start early, I think you do need to start at primary school. So is the relationships there? Are they well, are they bonded, are they well developed?
Yes, and I think that's the beauty of the See It Be It programme and Sheffield Business together, because actually it's quite difficult for schools to get relationships with individual businesses. That's obviously dependent on the businesses in your area, the time, everything you were mentioning. So why this programme has been so successful is that it acts as the interface. So the schools have got contact people that they can go and talk to, get all the information they need. We can organise ourselves and the businesses to fit into those timetables. So that's why the See It Be It interface and working in partnership with Business in the Community has been so important, because it means that there is that relationship building through the schools, and they don't have to do it directly with the businesses, which is where some schools were able to do that and some others. So it really levels the playing field. So yeah, I do feel assured that that's happening. Did you want to add to that?
Yeah, so schools although, you know, they have a whole host of priorities, they do have to meet the Gatsby benchmarks, which basically say that 18 significant encounters with businesses can really change, you know, the ambition and the culture within the school for young people and, you know, the career opportunities that they then go on to take. So the See It Be It programme takes the pressure off school leaders really, and giving them a formulated way to be able to access those relationships with businesses.
It's about to say any more questions, but councillor Fox, I think you have one.
Sorry, thank you. I just wanted to add to that, because I've been into schools where they have these inspiration days, and I don't know if that is linked up to this See It Be It, but they are very good, them schools, the primary schools, at getting the local businesses involved in that. And I just wondered if you linked up with that?
It sounds like the same thing, actually, because these are inspirational talks from businesses that are going into different schools to talk to them about, you know, how you can, what it's like to be in business in that particular sector, do that to inspire them. So I am expecting that that's a similar thing. Some schools might still be doing it on their own, but again, this programme's just to help those interfaces, people and schools that might struggle to do it themselves.
So just to add to that as well, I was told by See It Be It College yesterday that they've actually been, the campaign See It Be It has been shortlisted as finalist in the Social Mobility Awards for both leadership and public sector organisation as well. So I think that shows kind of the impact of See It Be It perhaps. Thank you.
So I don't see any more requests for questions or comments, so just, oh. Councillor Ola.
I've got a comment, if I may. Yeah. Thank you Chair. Thank you Yvonne for the report and then. Chair, I'd like to say that I fully support council's involvement in funding for the Sheffield Pride of Place programme, which aims to create economic opportunities for local people through the power of collaboration. As Yvonne and I've highlighted, that recent example of the power of collaboration has been the council's campaign, See It Be It campaign, which provided young people, young residents in the city, meaningful employment counters to improve their life chances and career choices, as well as boosting productivity and inclusivity. This programme will help to reduce the likelihood of a young person becoming NEET, not in employment, education and training. Hence I fully support this programme. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome Tony and Safia. So unless there is anything else, I'd like to thank everybody. Oh councillor Downing.
Yeah, I'm really sorry I've been late this morning. I left my house at 29 this morning because I left my car in Howden House because I got blocked in because of the cycle, the cycle race. But anyway, I'm here now. Can I just have a few words about this please? Is it okay?
Sure, that's what we're here for.
Thank you Chair. Yes. I think this is a fantastic initiative and it should be welcome. We should recognise and applaud the work of Business in the Community and the current Pride of Place board for their work in helping to deliver long-term transformational change in our city and communities across the country. Bringing the world of work to young people, these interactions will help to strengthen the link and reduce the likelihood of young people falling through the cracks, especially those not in education, employment and training. This will also contribute to the City Goals programme and we should support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you Tony, that's a good comment about NEET as well. Yeah, very good. So unless there's nothing else, I'd like to thank officers and members for the questions. So we have recommendations in front of us. We're being asked to note the content of the Sheffield Pride of Place programme and approve that the executive director of City Futures should enter into a grant funding agreement with Business in the Community for a three-year programme that covers 24, 25, 25, 26, and then the year 26 to 27. Those are the recommendations. Does everyone agree, or perhaps quicker, does anybody disagree? I'll take that as read. So thank you very much, and thank you officers. So the next item on the agenda is the Adult Skills Fund allocation. We have two officers presenting, would you like to introduce yourselves please?
Thank you Chair. Yes, Richard Smith, I'm the interim head of lifelong learning and skills within the Education and Skills Directorate, and I'm with my colleague.
Yep. Good morning everybody. Shabazz Avas, interim service manager as of a couple of weeks ago.
Welcome. So guys, would you like to take us through it?
Yes, thank you, thank you for your time today. This is a paper that we're bringing this morning to request a formal decision in relation to the Adult Skills Fund, which is a grant allocation from South Yorkshire's Merrill Combined Authority. It's provided to us on an annual basis by South Yorkshire's Merrill Combined Authority, and the decision we're requesting today is for the local authority to be the recipients of this money, for the Family, Adult and Community Education Team, which sits within lifelong learning and skills to be custodians of that and to allocate that in order to deliver adult learning in the city. Just for the context and background around that, the value of the grant funding, it remains the indicative value, at least remains the same as it did last year, which is £2.27 million. The usage of that is in two main areas. It's, the Adult Skills Fund is predominantly around qualification-based provision, which supports South Yorkshire's strategy around skills in order to develop basic skills within the population of Sheffield. The other element of the funding that we're allocated was previously known as community learning. From September 2024, the government changed the name of that, it will be known as tailored learning, but effectively it delivers the same principles, which is non-qualification-based provision to support those furthest from the labour market, which again aligns with mission one of South Yorkshire's skill strategy and brings people furthest from the labour market into learning, hopefully into basic skills provision, and then ultimately in towards work and employment. So the two elements of funding that we use, and again, as context for committee members today, the service that we offer was hit quite hard by the pandemic. I think over the years of the pandemic, disengagement from adult learning inevitably because of restrictions of movement etc, had a legacy impact over the next couple of years, and that was a national picture as well. But nationally, the community learning, the non-qualification-based provision has seen an uptick of about 10% this year. But I'm pleased to report in Sheffield that we've seen increased access to our provision of 27%. So we're looking at a higher level of enrolments this year, and we're hoping to build on that next year with the fund that we receive. And in final piece of context, and also to request the committee's consideration today is around our use of that funding in terms of our delivery models. So we have a direct delivery team of tutors that deliver for us within the city. If I just share that our predicted achievement rates for this year are ahead of last year, we're looking at provision that will be looking in the mid 90s of achievement rates, attendance rate similarly around 93%. So we're pleased and want to build on that. But what we also do is subcontract an amount of our provision to community providers and local organisations, local education providers in the city, with the main purpose of supporting local communities, reaching into areas of the city that need that support the most, offering niche provision that we wouldn't be able to provide ourselves, meeting provision area need that we can't fulfil with our direct delivery teams, and also developing skills in certain work areas that again is specialist and niche. So there's an amount of about £650,000 which we commissioned last year, the year just closing, and we're looking to commission subcontract, I should say, a similar amount in the 24, 25 year, using the funding that we receive. So that's hopefully useful context, but hopefully the paper itself would have explained most of that to you.
Thank you. And I believe Ofsted gave you quite good feedback last time. Do you want to share that with us?
Thank you, yes. So I brought to committee previously the outcome of our Ofsted report, which, where Ofsted came to visit lifelong learning and skills, which just again for context, isn't just about adult learning, it's our delivery of education for 16 to 24-year-olds with special educational needs and disabilities and our... and our apprenticeship provision. So yes, May twenty twenty three was our latest visit and we were found to be good overall. But our provision achieved training for learners with high needs was found to be outstanding. On our adult learning provision was also judged to be outstanding, which we're delighted with. But clearly, the need now is to maintain that, which is partly why I share some of the figures around our achievement rates and attendance rates, because I believe that's what we're doing. But also to provide some information, we were able to have a really successful celebration event in June of this year where we rewarded learners for their endeavours and their achievements in the year. Unfortunately, it fell during the pre-election period. Otherwise, I was intending to invite committee members to join us on that. But the deputy lord mayor and the lord mayor were able to join us and it was a really valuable and heartwarming day, I would say.
Yeah, thank you for that. Forgive me for asking the leading question. I mean, that was, those were fantastic results from Ofsted. They really, really were. So colleagues.
Aye, thank you for the report. My question is that you talked about the younger end, but what about the older adults? In my area, a while ago, we used to offer IT skills to older people. I'm talking about ones that maybe have been in work and done the manual work and then they come out and they find that to get a job, they need IT skills. And we had a community group that used to offer that. Sadly, it went before Covid, but I'm wondering if we offer that anymore because, and also it offered courses to elderly people to learn them how to use email because, you know, when this world, they find that they need to do that and often they can't. And we offered a short course to help, you know, elder people get on. And I'm wondering if there's any provision for that in this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fox. Yes. Well, I'm pleased to say absolutely there is. So the provision that faces offer falls into four main curriculum areas. The largest of which is our English as a second or additional language, demand there remains high. But there is provision for basic skills, which includes functional skills, English and maths and digital skills that you're referring to there. So the age that we work with is anybody from the age of nineteen up till whatever age they might be. We have got provision. I mentioned earlier that community learning will be known as tailored learning from September twenty twenty four. But one of the real benefits of that change, although I described it as a name change, is slightly more than that. It will allow us to effectively do what it says on the tin. We'll be able to tailor provision, deliver courses that are what communities need. So whereas previously we may have been slightly bound by a qualification around essential digital skills or a particular way of delivering the education, we can be quite creative now. And we recognise that many communities that we serve need, don't need necessarily qualification. What they need is to know how to use digital IT functionally and whether that be registering to vote, online shopping, using emails, all of that. So I think we've got capacity there. I'd be delighted to talk to you further about what the need might be in your particular area and talk to my lead tutor for that and see how we might be able to support there.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Erin.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the report, Richard, and welcome to the service showers. And congratulations on your outstanding Ofsted report. Given that the access to the services is going up, which is a good thing, and retention rates are high, but we've effectively had a real terms cut in terms of the fund from SIMCA of its remained level, has that created any particular pressures?
Yes and no. So actually, whilst the funding that we are being allocated, or the indicative allocation for this year is the static, it's remained the same as last year. Last year was an upturn, so we had had an increase. So previous to that, it'd been static for ten years. That really had created a lot of pressure in that way. The increased funding through SIMCA was welcomed and we have, it has partly enabled us to see that increase in learning, an increase in learner numbers. I imagine it will remain static now for the foreseeable future, although I can't accurately predict that. So I think where we're at in that cycle of changing funding means that this coming year, we should be able to deliver what we need to deliver. If there are particular needs, we can respond to those. So I don't see there being a challenge in the year ahead, but obviously in time to come, that may well arise. Okay.
I think, can I just, I mean, just to add to that, we do, we do receive some external funding for particular curriculum areas where there's a high demand, like ESOL for learners that can't speak English. English isn't their first language. So we do receive funding from central government, from Department of Leveling Up for ESOL, for recently arrived families coming through the resettlement route, but also through the recent Hong Kong BNO visa route. So there is, we do have some additional funding that contributes to our demand within the city.
And actually, I ought to add that SIMCA itself has a growth fund. So if we were to reach a point of realising demand was outstripping supply, we could make an application to SIMCA for additional funding, should we need it.
That's very reassuring. Okay. So we'll go to Barbara and then Tony.
Thank you for the report. I mean, I'm all in favour of continuing educational opportunities as an ex-teacher. It's of maths for the non-achievers. And I've always been despairing of the fact that so many youngsters feel they're thrown on the scrap heap because they haven't come out of school with qualifications. So this is really good. Now, I'm curious about the Multiply programme. I thought, I mean, I know it's been very successful, but I thought we'd asked last session if we could have a case study? Because I think sort of it brings to life the difference that you actually make as a service. So is there any opportunity for that? And is the committee agreeing? Because I think we'd asked for it before.
Absolutely. So the decision I'm here to request today relates to our adult skills fund allocation. The Multiply funding that we receive is again a separate source of funding. It has been very successful. We've, in fact, during year two of Multiply, Sheffield as an area outperformed regional colleagues to the extent where we've now received an additional amount of money to reflect that overperformance. So that's, we're delighted with that. That's enabling us to extend. We have a specific role within the team, information, advice and guidance around numeracy and Multiply. The Multiply programme itself, the funding ends in March twenty twenty five, but the overperformance from last year will enable us to extend those posts so that we can see through the transition from when Multiply ends, which is still our expectation based on latest government information, extend that through into the following years. Because what we need to see is learners that come through the Multiply programme now be embedded in our, in our adult learning courses. So whereas Multiply is effectively engaging people in numeracy, as you know, it's about them moving to entry level, level one, level two qualifications. In relation to a case study, my apologies, I have, there are multiple case studies that I can share with this committee. We've got lots of great examples. We had a celebration event, a separate celebration event for Multiply where learners came and spoke to other providers within the Multiply area about the impact it's had on their lives. And I'm sure either those individuals will be happy to come and speak, or I could present a written case study. But yes, apologies, I haven't provided that to date. What would be the best means for me to provide that to you?
Perhaps we can pick that up after we've had the questions. There's something going through my mind, but I'm just anxious if people have got questions and we'll maybe pick that up at the end. So, Tony?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I represent Mosborough Ward. And I had, last year, I think it was last year, I had one or two people come to me saying they used to be able to access this lifelong learning and skills locally. I think it was, I think it was in Waterthorpe somewhere. But they've said that it now doesn't exist there and they have to go further afield. And if they haven't got, if they have to use public transport, like I've had to do this morning, if they have to use public transport and, you know, it can be not only perhaps sometimes unreliable, but sometimes it can be expensive, especially if they're not, if they're not working, you know, and they're on benefit. So I'm wondering if you could enlighten me on what's happened with that, please. Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Yes, thank you for that question. I will bring my colleague in, Baz, in a moment. Just in relation to, I'll take it in reverse, or the public transport question, there is support through the funding that we receive to help adults, adult learners who need access to learning with things like public transport support. We can, we can support people with bus passes. We also support with things like childcare, et cetera. So that option is available. However, obviously the preferred model is to deliver locally so people don't have to travel. There are, what, the way that we design our curriculum and the way that we've developed our offer currently is through looking at demographics data, looking at levels of interest and where demand lies. And obviously, we do sometimes have to make some difficult decisions about where to focus our efforts. However, I think if the scope for us to deliver, was it specific areas of delivery, for example, functional? So we'll take that back, we'll have a look at in terms of what we might be able to deliver through Waterthorpe. I will just bring Shabazz in, although you're new to this role, you've been in the team for many years. And I know we have delivered under your tenure in those areas.
Been here many years. More than happy to have that discussion with you, councillor Downing. And it's also similar to the question that councillor Fox put. We do have a team of IAG officers, information, advice and guidance officers that can come out and talk to individuals, talk to community organisations to see what appetite there is there. But as we should say, we are governed by, you know, having viable numbers within classes and making sure that the venue is fit for purpose. But yes, I'm sure we can have that, something happening in your area.
Yeah, a bit similar to Tony's in a way. It's really for Shabazz, I suppose, because he used to come and see us at our East Lac and, oh, not East Lac, but the Community Assembly and, I can't remember, Partnership, the one that succeeded that one. Can we, will you be able to tell us what's happening in the East Local Area Committee area? Can we have that, that information about what's happening throughout that, throughout the wards in that area?
Absolutely. We can certainly provide you a timetable of what is being delivered across the city, including in all the like areas, certainly in the east as well in terms of our own direct delivery, but also subcontracted provision. It's a shame, this current year, we really tried hard to try and get Matrec to become a, an anchor organisation to deliver across that area. Unfortunately, they didn't have the capacity and, you know, we'll still work with organisations there, Woodthorpe, Manacastle Development Trust and in Dornell to try and put on provision. We're having, we're having discussions with Tinsley to see if there's any provision there because obviously we recognise that Tinsley is kind of isolated. So, you know, it's similar to the answer I gave there, that we're open to anything that you can suggest and point us to.
Well, we'll invite you to our informal meetings and have a good discussion about things.
If there are no more questions, colleagues, just coming back to the request for the discussion about Multiply, I'm just wondering whether an option might be to bring a briefing paper on Multiply and the Numeracy Skills back to the committee later in the municipal year. I'm looking around the room. Would that be good? I'm seeing lots. Would that be okay with you guys?
Absolutely delighted to do that. And we will certainly ensure there's some case studies in that paper. Absolutely.
Oh, councillor.
I'd like to make a comment, Chair, if I may.
You can make as many comments. Well, no, actually.
First of all, thank you, Richard and Shabazz, for your report. I really welcome this funding allocation. This fund will provide essential learning opportunities for young people and adults from disadvantaged communities and households, which will guide them closer to the labour market as well as employment. programmes such as ESOL will provide a pathway for a lot of our residents towards active citizenship, which is also very important. Hence why I welcome this. Thank you.
And I think, last one, councillor Masters.
Yeah, it's very quick. It's just to say that because maths and it underpins so many of the forthcoming technological advances that we're going to face, I mean, I'm just so in favour of anything that you can do to improve the math skills of the general population regardless. So, thank you.
I'd like to second that. As a mathematician, I'd like to second Barbara Masters' comment.
Okay, I'm seeing no more hands go up. So we have two recommendations in front of us. So we, as a committee, we are being recommended to accept the Adult Skills Fund grant allocation for Sheffield and for the Lifelong Learning and Skill Service to become the accountable body for this grant allocation for the academic year twenty twenty four to twenty five. And we're also recommended to approve the commissioning and procurement of the nineteen plus adult learning and skills activity in community settings across Sheffield from external providers for a period of one year at an estimated value of six hundred and fifty thousand pounds. And also the recommendation to invite these guys back at a later point in the year to update us on Multiply. We agreed on that? Anybody disagree? I'm seeing lots and lots of heads, so that's carried. Thank you very much for coming in. That was really good.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
So, next item on the agenda is an item on the governance of the Sheffield Music Hub. This is an exempt item. So unfortunately, this item is not available to the public or press because it contains exempt information relating to financial and business affairs. If members wish to discuss the information in the appendix, we'll have to ask members of the public and press to leave. I understand we will also be pausing the webcast at this moment. But for anybody watching, don't worry, we will be back shortly. So if you just. Okay, colleagues. Cameras are now back on. For anybody online, I do apologise, but under legal advice, we had to turn the items, turn the cameras off there. So colleagues, we move on to item eleven, which is Culture Strategy. That's page one six seven of the pack. And people presenting here, we have Diana, Sarah and Kate. So would you like to introduce yourselves and take us through it?
Great. Yes, hopefully you all know me, but I'm Diana Buckley. I'm the Director of Economy, Skills and Culture. Sarah Sharp is the new culture manager who's been involved in this, isn't here, she's had to cover another meeting, but this is Kate.
So I'm Kate Brindley and I've been leading the process of the Culture Strategy for the council.
Fantastic. Do you want to just take us through it?
Yeah, no problem. So I'm really pleased to present this report today because this committee has taken really active leadership in culture since the committee was established a couple of years ago, really. So you've taken regular reports on culture and taken decisions to support the sector. And in autumn twenty three, you took the decision to commission this new Culture Strategy. So it's great to be able to provide a draft of that to you now. And there's no formal decision today, but we have asked in the recommendations that you note the progress that we've made so far on the draft Culture Strategy. Provide any comments that you might have on the draft strategy, give us a steer on any of the draft priorities. This is now in the public domain, so we are in formal consultation as well. And then endorse the next steps to get to a final version of this, which we would hope to adopt in the autumn here at EDS Committee. Before I kind of hand over to the comments, I just would like to go through a few of the key points in the strategy and to bring in Kate to talk about the vast engagement and consultation that's been done in informing this, which I think has been one of the real positives and foundations of the work so far. So in the document itself, I think it's on page thirteen, for those of you who would like to kind of follow. I just wanted to talk to you about the four creative missions that are at the heart of the strategy. I'm going to start with number four and work up actually. But one of the key things that we heard from the engagement is that we need to strengthen the foundations for culture to thrive in the city. So we've really heard that and we want that to be one of our base missions around this project. Now, there's a role for the council in that in terms of leadership, but it's also about capacity building with our cultural organisations. And you might remember from one of the previous reports here that our investment per head from government departments like the Arts Council is around six pounds fifty nine per population head, where it's actually towards thirty to forty pounds per population in Leeds and Manchester. So if we can work with the sector to bid and win more of that funding, it will really help to support the sector and to support Sheffield. So we need to make sure we strengthen the foundations of the sector and capacity build. The next mission is around recognising the value and connecting with the culture of our communities. And this is really coming around the welcoming cultures work that we've been doing and looking at the diversity and celebrating the diversity of our cultures. The Culture Collective and the Consortium have been working on this for a while already. And it responds also to the work of the Race Equality Commission and some of their recommendations. Equality Commission and some of their recommendations around culture. So we want to take that really seriously, embed it in this approach. But it's not just about diversity, it's also about making sure that our neighbourhoods have access to culture where they live. Going back to the point you were making earlier councillor around in Burngrieve, where are those cultural hubs? How are you hearing things? How are you involved? How are you co-creating culture as well as kind of going to the city centre? So that's really important. We also want to accelerate the sector's creative potential. Some of this is about young people who are the lifeblood of the future culture sector for Sheffield. So how do we make sure young people are accessing culture in their localities but also in the city centre and how are we identifying the talent in our young people and bringing that into fruition for the future? There are also areas like Creative Health where we are leading nationally, where we acknowledge and understand the benefits that culture can have for wider economic and social issues like cohesion, like health and how we utilise that going forward. The final one is around dreaming big and celebrating loudly which is not something Sheffield is always that good at to be honest. But culture can really be a mechanism that brings the world into Sheffield but also how we speak out to the world from Sheffield. We wanted to recognise that in this strategy. It's a big sector in Sheffield, the culture and creative sector, that there's about 9,000 employees. On page 47 of the document if you're interested in data which I always am, it talks about the scale of growth in that sector and across the economy. It's been one of the key sectors that's expanding. It's expanding faster than other core cities although it is smaller at the moment. So in order for us to really scale what we're doing in creative and cultural industries, we need to make sure that we're doing more in the international stage as well. It's a really powerful lever for tourism, for the local economy, bringing events and footfall in. We want to make sure that in music, we're talking about being a music city, in visual arts and theatre and film where we have got international assets, that we continue to speak outside of Sheffield as well as to our own communities. So there are some of the areas that the strategy is based around. In terms of the document, just to explain that to you as well because one of the bits of feedback we've already got is it's very long which is is that we're talking about these creative missions. We are also wanting to put some harder outcomes around what we're trying to do, how we're going to measure success which is really important. But in this document we've also gone further to talk about a delivery plan. So some of the length in this document is because we're going into detail around some of the actions that have been coming out of the consultation that we think we need to do. There's also a lot of information about the sector and that what we've heard from the sector. So that just explains what you're seeing in the kind of the format of the document and its length although we are looking at that for the next final draft, how actually some of that could belong in appendices and make a really short sharp document. Beforehand over I just want to give Kate the chance to talk to you about the scale of the engagement and consultation that we've done because I think it's really worth noting for the committee.
Thank you Diana. So a really important part of the strategy development was the engagement process. It wasn't in any way an add-on, it was completely integral to taking this forward. And so the engagement has been designed to have sort of multiple touchpoints across many different areas of the city and in many different ways. And it was constructed in a way working with a delivery, engagement partner so Opus Independent who are locally based but also working with freelancers who were able to activate the conversations with particular communities. And we also went and did work both with specific groups but also open workshops and conversations. And we're now on our third digital survey. One of the key parts of the strategy engagement was around having Have Your Say site that we've made real use of. So what we did was really do our workings in public. So by that I mean publishing anything on the engagement process that we were finding as we go along, not waiting to the end. So it was very iterative so people could see what people were saying and then respond to it. So that's all on the site so people are able to see what sorts of conversations have been having and also log various comments to us now on the draft strategy. So, excuse me, so publishing the draft strategy is an important moment for us because we committed to going back to those people that had been so engaged. And the culture sector is full of passionate people which is one of the reasons it works in the way it does. So there's a huge amount of energy and will in the culture sector and a huge embracing of this work. And the city amazingly hasn't had a conversation with itself or broader about its cultural priorities for quite a long time, so over a decade. And so what we found as well is this real latent desire to talk about culture, to make it as broad as possible and as inclusive as possible and to really get into that in some detail. And you know, part of the challenge for us as a strategy team is actually doing justice to the richness of the conversations and the work that we've uncovered. And hence why the documents ended up being quite huge at the moment. But it won't end up looking like that. We had to start somewhere in terms of getting it out there. So one thing that happened yesterday was we did our public meeting on the draft of which over 100 people engaged and more online, the online is open for another two weeks. And there was a real people were very welcoming about this initiative. They're really keen, the missions that that sort of overarching missions, they really recognise. There's a lot of discussion about the delivery plan which is always going to happen because that's the bit where it's much more iterative I'd suggest and which will have to adapt and change and have a collective leadership process to oversee that as it moves forward. But yeah, that's where we are but we've still got another couple of weeks more of comments to then consolidate that for the next draft which you will say.
Great, thank you Kate. Just to say finally then that some of the things that we have heard have been the positive things. People recognise themselves in the document, they agree with the drafts. What we do recognise ourselves though is it's got to be much shorter so we'll probably do a separate consultation report, this is what we said, a separate delivery plan and make the actual strategic document much more positive, forward facing. Good luck in obviously, we'll design it up and shorter. So I just wanted to kind of say that before you all tell me that it's too long. So yes, thank you. Yeah, we really welcome your feedback, thanks very much.
Thanks very much. And just before I open it up to others, it does make you wonder with all this wonderful activity going on, if we can improve that level of funding from the Arts Council, can you imagine what it's going to be like? Amazing. Well it is amazing now but wow. So colleagues, anybody want to contribute? I'll go with Denise, then Barbara, then Henry, then others.
Thank you Chair, thank you for this. I've got to be honest, I haven't read it all because I'm new to this committee. But what stuck me is that, I don't know if it's in or have we missed out, football. Because thousands of parents and children take place, take part in football every Sunday. And you can witness, you know, the health and wellbeing side of things, the team spirit that they gain, but also the parents come together and you know, socialise. So if it's in, I apologise but it's just struck me as being it should be, if not, thank you.
And there is some information on Sheffield, the home of football in the document itself as kind of a cultural asset that we need to look after and support. But this document sits alongside the sport and leisure strategy that's also been adopted by the council. So the two kind of overlap. So football is more talked about in there than the culture document but we can do more to connect the two I think. But we have got references to the Sheffield Home of Football but I will, I'll take that on board Denise, thank you.
Perhaps I should declare an interest, I'm the Chair of Sheffield Home of Football Charity and I've not, not seen that so I would be interested to see that, thank you.
Thank you, well we can pick that up after the meeting. So we go Barbara, then Henry, then Mary.
Thank you. And I must, forgive me if I've missed it, but you say the consultation has still got two weeks to go. And this is such a multi-layered thing, there's so much crossover and we have so many consultations, where is it? And is, you know, so basically that's my question.
Well we can circulate the link to committee, there is a permanent site. So if you look at, if you just Google Sheffield Culture Strategy, it should come up. But it's on Have Your Say is the council's platform for all consultation. But we can send you all the link directly so you can send that link to whoever you want and also respond personally. We'd absolutely welcome that. But we've been circulating that through all of the people that have met us so far and been part of the engagement and they've given us their contact details. So we've gone out to hundreds of people through that link. We've also been doing a lot with our press team and with social media. We wanted to do a bit more but the general election meant that we couldn't do some much more proactive stuff. So we have extended the date that we're going to leave that open for a bit longer so we can do some more comms. But we'll circulate the draft, the link to you guys as an action from today.
Thank you. I mean, I do find that Have Your Say site so confusing to navigate unless you actually know what you're looking for, you'll never find it. It's not set up as a search engine at all.
Yeah, we'll send it through.
Thank you Chair, thanks for yet another wonderful good news item for the committee today. It's been an absolute pleasure. You mentioned the Arts Council capita for funding per capita. As much as there are some problems with that as a metric is it sort of glosses over small scale stuff that doesn't attract funding. It's incredibly measurable so it's quite useful as a metric based on that. At what frequency are we going to be able to look at that? Presumably we're expecting an uplift over time so that we're approaching parity with Manchester if not, if not Leeds are perhouse not with standings.
I think we can have it annually but it's probably going to be more meaningful every three years because that's where the big national portfolio organisation funding agreements are made and a lot of that is down to where N P Os are funded. So I think we can get an annual look to look at how much we're getting from grant programmes and capital programmes. But overall the N P O programme only moves there for three years. So it might go like that hopefully.
If I'm still here in three years, I'll watch this space.
Thank you. So I've got Mary, then Sophia and then Hippy.
Thank you. I think this has got so many parallels with the last report we had and the conversation we had absolutely applies to this, the cultural strategy as well. And I think it's so needed at all sorts of levels if we're to make a big bang thing in Sheffield and we're almost on the brink of, always seem to be on the brink of doing that. And I think, you know, absolutely essential. And we value all aspects of our culture which we absolutely do but we need to bring it to the fore. And because sometimes people don't realise how much they value the culture in their local communities. They take it for granted and I think we just have to nurture and foster that. And there's so many opportunities that could spring from it so, thank you.
That's a good point about taking it for granted. Yeah, we're all guilty of that I think. But unless you have any comments on that, I think Sophia was next.
Yeah, I'm going to follow what Mary have said. So I don't know if somebody, I don't know what happened but I was looking forward of coming yesterday but we had a full council. So that, so we would have come with our communities and those 100 people that turned up would have been 200 people and different people would have come. A lot of people would have, I think our communities absorb things face to face instead of survey. If it's surveyed then it has to be an engagement thing within our community. Again, it was at workstation, it was in our local community centres. So again, it's finding, navigating people to go there. So I just wanted to see, to say because you've only got a couple of weeks to go, what chance have you given the communities to get involved? And also what is culture for you? So I'm Somali, my children are Arabic, Yemeni. Culture, we interpret culture differently than what is culture. Is it a behaviour? Is it a flag? Is it a costume? What is it? So we celebrate a lot of Independence Day here in Sheffield for Somali landers. So for me and my family and my community, where would we have our say? Like where do I get my 16 year olds to think about their culture or identity? That's more of where we are. And also how do I, as a local councillor who is very ethnic minority, how do I connect the council or what you guys are trying to do with the community because they'll be looking at me? Do you understand what I'm saying? So I need to build that bridge between watering down this, what you're trying to say, what you're trying to do, just like NHS, just like anything else. So we did the sports strategy for the Sheffield City Council. And with the amount of work that we did and them coming and bringing young people and going through the sports, it's only engaged 1,700. To make a 10 year plan for 1,700 voices, it's not good enough reach. So for me, it's like we don't want to make that mistake again here. We want to make sure that all levels of culture or all level of diversity, all level of disability, whoever you're, we're trying to put in this plan, make sure that it reaches the older, young, the sports, football, that what is it that we're trying to do? Because we need to link that with the equalities, with the racism, with everything else. It needs to be a blanket, a protective blanket for us to thrive, for us to, you know, for new settlers, for refugees, for all sorts of people that is trying to survive here. And for me, it's a very, very, very important that we champion and we champion what you do and put them in different platforms so we can make sure that we've done really good honesty work. Like I said, communities are, some of them are illiterate in terms of I T, in terms of, so let's remove any barriers. And if it takes two weeks, if it takes a two year, it doesn't matter. The most important is that let's get it right, the foundation first and get in, try to get as much people as we can and that diverse. And then let's then build from there. So we don't come in three, four years' time and saying, oh, we didn't cover that or we didn't cover that. And also if you could leave a little bit of a 20% of development because we are going to be passing everything here to the younger generation and younger generation. 10 years is a long time, especially for me. 10 years is a very, very long time. So yeah, that's really my comment. I just don't want it to do, I want to do it with. So and I know that, you know, I've worked with you and that's what you're trying to say. So I have, I only heard it through Joe that emailed me yesterday. I mean, I didn't. And I met one of your new assistants that has been, just been recruited. So I've only come across it by culture. So if I don't know about it, can you imagine, how do I amplify that? And also bringing that trust relationship between the communities and the council as well. So there's so many, so many things that we could do together but we just need to engage in that conversation. And there's no point of measuring the impact if we're not part of the process. So yes, I appreciate your work and I appreciate every work that you've done and I've read it and it's lovely. Thank you.
Just before we get into, I've just noticed colleagues, we've got another 15 minutes and one other item to go. So if we can keep comments as succinct as possible, that'd be great. Over to you Diana.
I'll just respond briefly to this and then happy to have a conversation afterwards. Firstly just to say there is always more we can do to reach into communities. So happy to do that and follow up afterwards. Just in terms of what we have done, we recognise the online issue and so we've done an awful lot of face to face. We've done bespoke workshops that have been topic based, we've done area based work as well. So we've done a vast amount of consultation. We won't have reached everybody. We have made this focus primarily on touching the sector. We haven't done a lot of public consultation. We think that's something we can do in the second stage as well. But we wanted to listen to the sector first. We've also used networks. So people like the African Heritage Culture Forum, Migration Matters, other organisations that have, welcoming cultures that have wider footprints than we do because we recognise people won't talk to the council all of the time. So we've been harnessing networks of networks as well. But granted, we can always do more and should always try. So if there's things that we've missed, please do tell me. And then just your point about flexibility. I think this is the other point around splitting the strategic elements and the delivery plan. The delivery plan should always be a live document. You should always be able to respond and adapt to what the changing environment is, to good ideas. So I think by setting the course separately as the strategy and then working together on the delivery plan, that will enable that co-production all the way through. So thank you.
Thank you Diana. I have Hippy and then we'll end with Sun.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Diana and thank you Kate for the report. I just want to say it's such an important piece of work. The Culture Strategy will provide the framework to realise our city's ambition around culture, which will also align with our other key strategies such as city goals and growth strategy. I have to thank all the officers for the hard work on this. I'd also thank all the individuals and organisations. I'd also like to thank all the individuals and organisations who have participated in the various consultation processes over the last eight months. I believe by end of this month, we would have had responses from or engaged with over 1,000 people throughout the process, that's absolutely amazing. And I believe that the honour survey has been extended by another week until the end of the month, so there's still time for people to express their views and shape this important and much-needed culture strategy. Thank you.
Okay, unless you have any comments, feedback on that. Simon?
Thank you, yeah, I mean, hopefully I can be quick, I mean, I think the issue, I think around this is around accessibility, I mean, we had a discussion on previous items about musicians and their strangeness, or their rumlot or whatever, and I think, you know, obviously, you know, they are quite often outside the mainstream, the creators, and so we are going to need to look at ways to engage them that are different. I also, I mean, I didn't go into a great deal of detail in it, but in, I represent Beachford Greenall, which is on literally the edge of Sheffield, next to Derbyshire, and one of the things we noticed when trying to restart the Low Edges Festival, was that often we have dance groups there, but there are none from the local area, and so, you know, supporting, you know, finding out where those gaps are, and supporting where there is that demand, because we did some work as part of a lottery bid, to say, you know, engaging with the local kids and the community around what they might like, and very much that came out of the, you know, we have to go elsewhere to get involved in dance, you know, there's a lot of football around there, but not a great deal in that culture end of it. And again, you know, they wanted to experience the music of Sheffield, but, you know, very much that seemed to be based, you know, in the city centre, and wanted to actually experience that out on the edge, as it were. So yeah, I say, I welcome it, it does mention, as I say, the efforts that you're going to be putting in to put that in. So yeah, so obviously, I think it does need to be, you know, accessible to those who are somewhat alternative, and I also welcome the fact it does actually have those metrics in there, which, you know, allows us to hopefully, you know, measure success or otherwise of this, of this strategy, and hopefully give, you know, the, as I say, the opportunities that people need in the city, so thank you.
Thank you. Just in the interest of time, I'll respond quickly, but accessibility, I think, is really important, and I think that's why one of the core things in the strategy is about working with communities and in communities. People shouldn't have to just come into the city centre to experience culture, and in fact, there's a broader range of cultural experiences out in Sheffield, so that's something we do want to highlight more of, and if there are gaps, that we should look to plug as part of the delivery plan.
Thank you. So, we have some recommendations before us, and those are that the committee notes the progress so far in developing a new city culture strategy. And we provide any comments on the draft strategy in general, and give a steer on any draft priorities. And we are being asked to endorse the next steps to finalise and adopt the strategy, which will be coming back to our committee in the autumn. We agreed on those? I'm seeing nods of any, anybody disagree? In that case, that's carried. Thank you very much for being so patient. So, last but by no means least, we have an item, an update on the financial outturn, otherwise known as budget monitoring. Jane, you're here to give us an update on that, so welcome, over to you.
Thank you, Chair, I'm Jane Wilby, Head of Accounting. So the paper is to give you the update on the final outturn position for twenty-three, twenty-four. The paper was taken to the Finance Committee in June, but this was delayed due to the election, so it's fairly out of date now, because it was a March position, we're actually currently in the process of preparing the quarter-one accounts as we speak. So to just give you an overview, the council reported an overspend against budget of 15.6 million in twenty-three, twenty-four, against a net revenue budget of 497 million, which was a variance of 3.1%. Over the year, we saw relative stability in the forecasting, so we started out at quarter-one reporting a 17.6 million overspend, and it improved by 2 million throughout the rest of the year. Relative stability in that forecast showed a good commitment of council officers across the board to financial management and some realistic estimates of service costs. The improvement was largely due to interest income from our treasury investments due to some favourable market rates, so this provided almost 6 million of mitigations for our increasing unfunded overspends. The challenging underlying budget issues remain for the councils discussed throughout the year, children's services, SEN, home-to-school transport, adults' care and wellbeing, and in homelessness services. The housing revenue account was also suffered from overspends in the repairs service. So for the committee, the final outturn position was an underspend of 250,000 against a net revenue budget of 11.4 million, which was around 2%. This was due to some salary savings in the employment and skills and strategy, due to a surplus allocation for backdated costs on apprenticeships. Overall, good budget management within the committee budgets. It's worth noting that the key risks really in the service budgets sit around future income streams. The council put in place 47 million pounds of budget savings last year, to balance the budget, of which 78% were delivered, six and a half were deemed undeliverable and will present a risk to budgets in twenty-four, twenty-five, alongside underlying budget challenges of 26.7 million, which is noted in the table, 1.6.2. One-off grant income offset some of the core issues that need to be addressed in our budgets in order to be sustainable going forward, so the majority of those issues are in the key overspending areas, in adults, children's, and homelessness. We set aside 70 million pounds worth of reserves to be able to manage our budget overspends over the past three years, and as we go into twenty-four, twenty-five, we have 27.6 of that remaining. This will be quite challenging, given the fact that we are reporting an underlying overspend position of 27 million in the accounts. The issues in Sheffield are not unique, we're seeing similar things across the country, and uncertainty about future funding streams. There are some encouraging signs that new government recognisers, that councils need to be able to deliver, it's crucial to have long-term funding and more certainty through more multi-year settlements. So we're hoping that there's going to be an autumn fiscal event this year, that we might be able to get some further certainty in our funding streams. We're currently in the process of refreshing our medium-term financial strategy, and we begin the process again to set a balanced budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Pressure on services from increased demand inflating costs and reductions in funding on top of undelivered savings will make the process even more difficult this year. The paper's just to note the position for twenty-three, twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Just before I open it up, I think you spoke about funding streams, I think we all are aware that the end of the SPF funding is hovering into view, so what happens after that is incredibly important for this committee, so as soon as we have any information on that, a briefing or an update would be fantastic. So, yeah. Colleagues, Henry?
Thanks for the report, Jane. And the first thing we did this session was commit the corporate fund to another £100,000 in twenty-five and twenty-six, so I'm sure we're all hoping that when the fiscal statement comes out, we'll be looking at a fundamentally much better settlement for local authorities. I'm sure that's a cross-party feeling. And one minor thing, on 1.82, talking about the quarter-four outcome for the committee, it says that we got 16.6 from external income, much of it from the European Social Fund? Are we still getting money from the European Social Fund?
I was looking into this just before committee, actually. I think it's noted in our accounts as that, though it may just be a legacy issue, a lot of the funding then transferred to the UK SPF, as you kind of mentioned, councillors. I think it's kind of, the funding, it's changed in what it's been called, but essentially, it started out as the European Social Fund, but I think it's actually been sort of repurposed. I think we're all hoping for some further certainty on what happens with that from government.
I'd be hoping for us to rejoin, but there you go.
I think it'd also be a safe bet that whatever comes next will have a different name as well, just to help clarity. Anyone else, or are we, I'm not seeing anybody indicate, so Jane, thank you very much for coming. Colleagues, we have a recommendation to note the updated information and management actions on the twenty-three, twenty-four revenue budget outturn, as described in the report. Are we all agreed on that? Thank you very much. So that's taken, thank you for coming, Jane. And that is the last item on the agenda. Colleagues, the date of our next meeting is currently set on the 12th of September at 2pm. I look forward to seeing you again then, and yeah, see you soon. Stuff happens, Tony. Thank you very much, guys.